Hello and thank you so much for joining me tonight. My name is Becky and I like to offer Reiki ASMR style videos. Um, and this week I am doing things just a little bit different. Um, I just wanted to do a very chilled out, um, kind of just a fun, more lighthearted video. Um, this was my birthday weekend and the actual birthday is today when I'm recording this. Uh, which is on February the first. So I just wanted to just make something a little bit more lighthearted and I hope you uh enjoy. It's gonna be a little bit more ASMR heavy, um, a little bit of gift opening, show you some different things that I've received. Uh, and just some of my favorite things to just celebrate together. Um, and since it's a lockdown here where I am, I thought that we could just spend this time together and if you have celebrated your birthday, um, in the last year even, you may have had something uh like myself. So you just kinda have to make the best of it. And I'm very thankful that I do have a wonderful family and some close friends that have made this year extra special for me. Um, and although we can't be together, that I know their hearts are with me and their thoughts. So I just want to spread that to you as well. The positive vibes as this year continues. And we are in the age of Aquarius, so we, this is a very Aquarian heavy, probably because that is kind of what I resonate with the most. Just a little bit about me is that I am a Sun sign, Aquarian. My rising sign, which is important to know, so I'm going to just link, um, astro.com is the website that I use to find out the uh different aspects. Because it's makes everything uh about your personality and who you are, cause I'm certainly not just pulling from my Aquarian and Aquarian energy. I do pull from my rising sign, which is Scorpio. And my moon sign is Aries. So that's where you get the little bit of differences between different people who can be born even on the same day in the same year. Uh, it does, it matters within, I think it's an hour and a half is what I remember, the aspects shift. So if you know your exact place and time of birth, then um go ahead and look up those signs and leave a comment. I'm really interested to know what your signs are that make you up. And different personalities I find very fascinating, so. Alright, so I wanted to just show you a few things that I got. And the first thing I have is this pair of earrings that I was gifted from my partner, which is these sword and moon earrings. And I did pick them out, but they were a surprise. So what I like to do is to save a few things. Um, so I saved a few things on Etsy so that he could just choose what he liked. So I like the swords soak Aquarian energy is an air sign and swords resonate with the air sign um in the tarot. So that's what I liked about these. I just like that they're a little jangly as well. And so the place that he got it from was this store called Equinox Art. And they have lots of neat, uh unique things. And so I've, since I already unwrapped it, it came really nicely wrapped. Um, and she included a piece of incense as well, so it's a very strong scent, very floral. But I thought it was just a really nice extra touch that she added a piece of incense to her order. And there's a little coupon there, so I will probably check out her shop again and use that. Cause I like to support small businesses. I hope that you do as well. Um, so that was one thing. Um, and something else that I got from somewhere local here in London, Ontario, um, came just like this and I left it kind of so that we could pull it out during the video. And again, I, I knew what I was probably getting, but I didn't think I would get two things anyway. Um, so this is something in this bag. Which even the bag's really nice natural fibers. And this is this instructions for this beautiful gua sha. I've been waiting uh from about March to get one of these. So there's a local place in London, um, her ca- her Instagram name is Luna, oops, Luna Light. And she did tutorials every single day during the lockdown in March. Um, and how to use guashes properly. And I just thought that it's going to be nice. So it's a way to take care of your skin. And anyways, this is like, um, a very, like an ancient style tool. It's called the Bion Stone. So I'm really excited to try this out tonight. And she added a little tester of the oil that she recommends. I like to use rosehip oil every night. Um, so I know that this has got that as well, but uh it's called her, the triple threat. So it's nice that she included that so that I can try it out. And it's ni- it's nice that the instructions come as well. Yeah, I'm really excited to use this one because this one has the teeth on the side. And the way that she was doing the tutorials that you can use it on your fine lines and just like zigzag it to kind of eliminate your fine lines. It's kind of, um, they call it like a natural botox, like it plumps up your skin. And I really am excited to try to use it for the sinus area as well. So this one, um, this little tool was a surprise. Just some wrapping paper and so. So I can't remember what this is actually called. And if you remember what it's called, please leave a comment. Um, so this is a face tool again that you roll on a clean surface. And it's got these little teeny tiny micro needles that perforate the skin. And then you can put the oil on and then use your, um, the gua sha to get everything soaked in. So they really work well together, so I think this, I'm really excited to use both of them. And feels really neat actually, like it really you can tell that there's tiny little micro needles. So excited to use that. And then there's just a little card inside, uh, just saying thank you for supporting small business. If you're ever interested in supporting a, a small business like that, I'll leave her link below as well. I don't know her personally, but, um, she seems to really know her stuff when it comes to face care. Alright, so those were those few things. And I do have just something small here. I got some chocolates that definitely will be sharing. My favorite ones are the coconut. And this was from my kids. Alright. And as you see behind me, I have a couple flower arrangements. So my partner got me these ones and then a friend of mine who I haven't seen since the summertime when we had, the lockdown was lifted at that time. Is the last time I saw her was, um, July and so it was really, a really nice surprise this morning to get a delivery from her. Really, really sweet, was not expecting that at all, so. Um, and one more that I got from a friend. So that she just dropped this off in between my doors. And it was so sweet to get something special. So the first piece is this piece of metal art and it says breathe. Kind of like a meditation mantra possibly. It'll go somewhere in my treatment, treatment room, I'm thinking, so yeah. And this is from, um, a company in Haiti that employs mothers so that they don't have to get separated from their children. So it's a non-for-profit or like I think how it works is a certain amount of the profit goes back into the organization called Little by Little. And there's another small thing in the bag. Just stick to the card, there we go. So this is a little oil diffuser. And I think you can use it in your car or you can wear it as a necklace. And you, you can just hang it in your room, however you'd like to use it. So it's like a felted. The oil just goes on the felt and then, um, yeah, so that you can make your space smell nice or however you'd like to use it. So that was really sweet of her. And it's nice to support these sm- businesses, like I said. This is the card, so Little by Little. Yeah. So their mantra base, it's keeping families together. It's, it's preventing orphans, um, and preventing children t- from becoming orphan basically. So it's a really nice cause to support. Alright, so those are the gifts that I wanted to go over and share. I wanted to, um, just light a candle and I thought we'd just do a few of the things that gives, give me joy and I hope that they give you joy as well and, um, this is the coconut candle that I really love. This is a soy base candle. Just thought we'd light the candle while go through some of my, some of my favorite crystals, I mean, at the moment anyways, that resonate with the Aquarian season and I must say that I pretty much resonate with, with typical for Aquarians, very crown chakra, very in our head, very, um, thinking of the future and dreamy type of crystals, so. Uh, anyways, just thought we would do a card pull as well. Cause those are all things that I find very fun and I hope that you do too. So to begin with, let's just use our selenite, since I know it's a favorite. And I really enjoy this one with the point. This one has a beautiful sheen and I like the way it sounds. Alright. Just cleansing this space. Come, let's go down through your crown and then to the real. Alrights. So I wanted to show you and share with you this gorgeous, beautiful uh optical calcite with so many beautiful inclusions and rainbows. And it looks like you might be able to actually see the gorgeousness from the lights coming through. Certainly is a magical piece. You could just get lost in this piece if you were just. So these are the things that, you know, when you're at home and sometimes it's like at lockdown can get you maybe feeling down. This piece brings me so much joy. I mean, anything with rainbows, right? Very magical, very ground chakra. Very make-a-wish on this crystal ball vibes. Center grid possibilities, right? So anything very sparkly, like clear and sparkly. It's kind of typical Aquarian. Take me into space, take me out of this reality into another world or another realm. And I also have, oops, uh, my orange calcite. It's been one of my favorite, this is actually a m- a massage stone. You can use it to get deeper in. But I have not been able to actually use it on anyone. So I've been just enjoying using it purely for its happy color. That it's giving off such a joyful vibe. Solar plexus is what this one would resonate with. Orange used to be my favorite color for so many years. In fact, uh, my living room was painted bright orange, like crayon orange for so many years. I was that girl, yeah. So it's changed, just but there's no one dying that this particular color. And just the feel of the stone. I don't know if you, it's hard to, it's very, um, dense, but, um, how do I say, smooth. Milky smooth. It's kind of got that soothing feel, but in a, a joyful, happy, like I'm gonna be okay. It's all gonna work out just fine. Alright. And this is another newer piece and this is called Amazonite. And I love any color in this realm. Very soothing, so if you are ever looking for something just for anxiety, for soothing, for, um, stress relief, the Amazonite is a fantastic stone for that. And it's just really pretty to look at. And it's, it would be for the throat to heart area. It actually would suit really well in that exact spot where the sternum is. Alright, so then there's, uh, this beautiful piece of amethyst. Another favorite right now that I just love. Yeah, and it's got, it does have some rainbow flashes in it as well, but it's very, to me, like super spacey, very crown chakra. Like I'm ready to receive messages from Lumeria. You know, those kind of vibes. Another stone is this piece of angel light. Which is very, very soothing as well as working with our crown chakra. Something really interesting when you think like that rock just forms into these hard pieces of, you know, crystalline energy, like a solid piece of blue that there's no other, like no varications, no shine, opaque. Could be, I think, really interesting to see where this is mined, like where they're excavating it from. Just see like what the earth actually looks like, if it's really like just a big solid blue piece of rock, like I actually have no idea, but I think it looks really neat. Alright, and then this very special piece of Lumerian quartz. And it's in this really interesting shape, to kind of hold it like this and sweep it down. Of course, Lumerian quartz, I have a whole dedicated video using Lumerian quartz. I didn't use this piece, but this is just a gorgeous amplifying energy piece. Super pretty. I just thought I would share, um, just because it's another favorite, but I can't really sweep it through your aura. But this is apophyllite, it just had this huge piece, it's like a solid rock on that side and these gorgeous pieces of apophyllite, like look at that activator point. And this is Kelso Doni. And this piece just reminds me of frozen lake water, frozen ocean water with the pieces of ice quadulating together, floating to create these larger pieces, have iceberg or something like that. So I love this piece so much. And apophyllite again resonates with the Aquarian energy very much, so. So there, those are our crystals for tonight. And let's get ready to do. Alright, so I just thought we would do a card pull for the collective. I'm going to use this gilded tarot deck, which if you are new to doing tarot, I highly suggest these cards, I find very easy to read. And I just got this deck from Chapters. Alright, so we're just gonna ask for clear and concise messages for our card reading tonight for the collective. Um, and our highest and greatest good. Alright, we're just gonna ask for guidance from our spirit guides and angels. And we're going to do a past, present, future reading, alright? So we're just gonna ask for a card to represent our past. And I'm going to use three decks. This past is, we got, see, I'll, I'll read them actually all together at the end, so let's just get the cards read out first. I like then the cards kind of, um, tell a story, so let's do our future. Alright, good. Lots of energy so far. Alright, so the next deck is, um, let me show you, it's this beautiful Moonology deck. Alright, this deck is again very easy to work with. And I highly suggest it if you're new to oracle or card readings in general, because they give you a mini, um, explanation right on the cards, so you can kind of get away with, uh, using the book for reading if you're just looking to do like an overall feel. Let's do the past. And Angelique, my little kitty, is in the room, so she's gonna be making some noise possibly. She loves my treatment, treatment room. She's like her toy room, I feel like. Alright, and then the last deck I have is this beautiful super attr- Alright and then the last deck I have is this beautiful Super Attractor deck by Gabriel Bernstein. And just like again very nice deck to use if you're looking for any sort of like um inspirational messages. So just do a past. Okay. So for our past energies we have the High Priestess. We have your commitment is being tested. And when I merge my desires with faith, I can take action from a place of peace rather than control. So the I I'm feeling from this uh past energy is that our commitments are being tested. That's definitely resonating um for myself but also I feel like for the collective that makes a lot of sense in the sense of um if anybody's going through and we all are going through it no matter what um where our wishes, we have these high priestess is like um messages. We have a higher power behind us um but we're being tested like are we going to trust that the universe has our back? Um and then ma- mixing that with the when you merge my desire with faith, I can take action from a place of peace rather than control and that's a huge one like th- um to go with the High Priestess about letting go and trusting um the the higher beings, the higher powers and that you were here for a reason and you've been put on earth basically and be you've been guided up until this point and um but we like to have control over our our situations so um having that faith can be swayed and be c- can wane um right especially right now and just continue having the faith that um you know so in our past energy it looks like we might have been um going through questioning um what our um purpose or um whatnot has been but also the message is to keep having faith. So our present energies are um we've got the Empress. So she's very much in control. Um when I am grateful for what I have, I can feel good along the way when I do what I desire. Be bold and make make the first move. So at the present time, we've got a very um affluent energy going on. Like it's time to take charge again, to be bold and to go in it with gratitude. Be grateful for what you do have, not for what you might have lost, for what you wish you could have had. Um you know, be the Empress energy. You know, she's got this air of um she's got so much that she's uh generous to others and she shares her abundance and wealth with others. So we're going through a very big transformation back into this Empress card which is just a beautiful feeling and very hopeful. And I can feel it we're on the verge of big b- breakthrough which is nice. Um right and then what our future has is the Judgment card which paired with the Full Moon in Aquarius. It's co- um which is not appropriate for tonight's reading. And it's called Show the World the Real You. Alright and I let the universe catch up with my dreams. So very much Aquarian energy right here because we as Aquarians are and what we're going through is the age of Aquarius so we're the dreams. Um what we're going through right now is all these lot like thoughts and downloads and ideas and the universe sometimes does have to catch up so we want two things to happen right now, this year, next month. The universe is maybe putting that in place and you just sometimes need to give it a little bit more time. You also got this Judgment card which can um have to do with some new um contract sorry I just wanna uh get my cat. She's stuck here. She's got herself tangled in the light. And this is Angelique. She's growing super fast and she really just likes to explore everything in this room. Alright, so just to finish up that last um message was just letting the universe catch up with your dreams, showing the real you to the world. Um and you know th- the Judgment card to me is I mean nobody can judge you except you and God and the universe. I mean you don't have to worry about being judged. I mean follow your dreams. And um it's also to me could also mean the judgment will be in your favor. You'll be rewarded for being yourself. So hope that resonated and that you could take something away from it. Looks like it's a very hopeful time coming up. Um and I hope that brings true for you as well. Okay, just going to move you back up for a second. Just wanna say thank you so much for joining me. Uh thank you for all of your really lovely comments. Uh thank you for liking the videos and subscribing. It helps a lot to help grow the channel and to let me know what you like and that sort of thing. If you are ever interested in a private Reiki video session um I do offer those and they would be available. You can check out my website if you want or just email me if you would like to have one of those done. I try to keep the cost of those low so that anyone can really um benefit from that and um so yeah, so I look forward to seeing you soon and uh thank you for hanging out. Alright, have a good night. Bye now.